Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting, November 12th, 2025, to order. Please join us in a moment of silence. I'm going to think about our government and I'm going to hope they get their act together so we can all live in peace. That's my wish. Everybody, you have yours, so let's have that moment. Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay. Mr. Manager, there's no special actions. Okay. This brings us to public comment for items not on the agenda. Please state your name and where you live and feel free to come up and speak.
Good evening. My name is Chet Zarembo, resident of Newtown Gate. I've spoken before this board regarding the, first of all, the parking issue on Fountain Farm Lane. We have had numerous board meetings throughout our association, the quarters, the single homes, and townhomes. And there is unanimity on the issue of we are being treated unfairly by our own township, township where we pay taxes to. We have a strong voting block. And if this isn't resolved in a manner that is equitable to the residents, heads will rule. There's no reason why after 35 years, and I've said this before, out of the blue cars are being ticketed and still being ticketed on Fountain Farm Lane. What we propose is a moratorium on issuing parking tickets until after the holiday season. It's much too close for any, anything other than a moratorium that says there will be no ticketing on Fountain Farm Lane until the holidays are over. I'm sure all of you know as well as I know and residents know, we all have company coming. We all want to celebrate the holidays. And I don't want to be on pins and needles, running out to family members and things to make sure their cars aren't being ticketed. We do not have the parking in the courts. We do not have the parking in the quarters. That is a private lot, as has been previously acknowledged. And we do not want this to continue. I can't, I can't say it enough. It's caused lots of consternation. I had a call yesterday from a resident, an irate resident, who was ticketed. There's no need for it. There is absolutely no need for it. Until we get a resolution, until we decide if we are going to expend some township funds and put in painting and stop signs where they need to be placed, then should have been placed, the issue's far from resolved. I've met with Mr. Mack. I've met with Mr. Fisher. We've walked the property. It's a difficult issue to solve. And it certainly is difficult to solve within the next two months with Hanukkah, Thanksgiving, Christmas coming up. We won't solve it in that time. So I would ask respectfully that you consider issuing a moratorium to ban any tickets from being issued between now until after the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Parambo, representing the quarters at Newtown Gate. We did have our meeting with the two supervisors, and I thank them for that meeting. It went on for quite some time, and it was really a brainstorming type of thing. But my, we keep getting told that we can't stop the ticketing. No, just no, we're not going to stop. My thing is that I think this is an outrage, simply because it hasn't, there hasn't been one ticket issued for 35 years. We've talked with two of the supervisors. We hope to be able to work with engineering and this and that and find the viable solutions, whether it's areas that can have parking, whether it's, whatever the, whatever the solution is. But you're kind of tying our hands with saying, now, for 35 years, nothing happened. And now all at once, supposed, a supposed township person complained. And now all at once, it's, it's the rule of law. We can't do anything about it. I don't see that. I don't see where that is so rigid and that you can't work with us as we want to work with you to solve this problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Evan Rustnikoff, the Chief of Newtown Emergency Medical Services. And I wanted to make quick, two quick mentions this evening. First, our subscription drive, our annual subscription drive hit the mailboxes on Monday. And we invite you to check our website and the pamphlet that came in there all about our subscription drive and what it can do for you and what it does for us, especially with how uncertain things are, having that kind of backup to your medical insurance. It's a really good value if you unfortunately may have to call us to come help you. Second thing is, is that after decades of us doing our own ambulance billing in-house, our entire billing department is retiring in two weeks. They notified me this back in September, so we've been working through a transition plan. And we're going to be using a third-party administrator now to do our billing. It's all going to be outsourced. So anyone who has used us or will use us in the future, you may get something in the mail from Newtown Emergency Medical Services with a Redding address, because Redding is where the billing company is located. So that is not junk mail. It's not spam. It actually is our third-party biller. We've contracted with a company called First States Financial, who specializes only in ambulance billing. Ambulance billing is an extremely specialized industry. And instead of us trying to find someone who we know we won't find 20- or 30-year employees anymore like we've had, it's just more prudent to outsource this function. So they will be starting on November 26th. That's all I have. Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
I recently got your bill with a QR code on it.
Yes.
Right? Is that, what, where does that go?
That goes to our, we have a credit card processor we use for our, that's for our subscription drive.
Yes.
And we started putting the QR code on the card several years ago to make it more convenient to join. And actually, we saw a 5% increase in donors when we actually did that, so.
I'm one of them.
Yeah, we appreciate that. That goes to our secure site. We use a company called Paymentis. Lots of municipalities use them. Utility companies use Paymentis. It's a very well-known company. And it, it opened up more options for payment as well, including Google Pay, Apple Pay, Venmo. It gave other options. And they save us about 1.5% on the processing fee, since we don't pass the cost on to the member. We absorb the processing fee, so they, they've saved us several thousand dollars last year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope everybody supports our rescue, our rescue efforts, our rescue fund efforts, and the needs that the ambulance squad needs this year from a lot of different townships and boroughs that they serve. And we are going to do our due diligence to try to help them.
Madam Chair, may I suggest that, and I don't know if we already have done it, but that this information be put on our channel so people looking at it can get this information in regards to the drive and so on?
I think that's a great idea. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, moving on to our board members, since we have no committees tonight. I'll be short and sweet. I really have no report. It's been recovery from the election, basically, for a lot of us, and happy to have the time off. So with that, I'm going to move along to our vice chair, Mr. Fisher.
Yes, good evening. I would just mention about the elections, there was a pretty good turnout for an off-year local election, so I'd like to thank all those who came out to vote. I'd like to also recognize that yesterday was Veterans Day. And it's not too late, never too late to thank a veteran for their service. And I'd like to thank Mr. Davis for his service. I think that's all I have for now.
Mr. Mack.
Yes, just referring to Mr. Zarembo's comments that there was a Zoom meeting that we had with the, on November 5th, with the residents of Newtown Gate. And we did go over potential solutions to the problems, not only just the parking, but the speeding, crosswalks, and so on. And I just thought the resolution was that the people at Newtown Gate would submit something in writing, perhaps, that they agree on together with regard to what was discussed as a possible The other thing is, I did have a Meet Mack Monday Zoom meeting on November 3rd, and we discussed a number of issues, including the issue with Fountain Lane, Fountain Farm Lane, sorry. So I just hope, you know, that could get resolved. I mean, I think some of the discussion was reasonable, and, you know, maybe that can clear it up. I do believe, I do think, that at least some kind of moratorium on a few days during the holiday season might be something we should do. I know that the police department has a lot of other important things to do than to hand out tickets, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Mr. Calabro.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Davis.
I would just like to say that I would like to defer to the chief as far as ticketing on Fountain Farm Lane. If there is a law, we must obey the law. And that is all there is to it. And I think he was given an instruction to do, to start ticketing. And without that instruction, it would never have happened. So now we are in this position, and yes, we're going to try to work together. But the law is the law, is all I want to say about that. Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, may I make another comment?
Of course.
I think Mr. Mack referred to getting a proposal in writing. I think if we, I think the township could have our, if the rest of everybody agree, I just would suggest have our traffic engineer have a look at what would be feasible, like a preliminary, go look and see what are some of the things that possibly could be done and some of the safety measures that people brought up at the meeting, stop signs, crosswalks, using the speed board, some of those three or four things I think we could have a look at. And maybe our department, maybe our Department of Public Works could help out, too. So those would be my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. If everybody has read the consent agenda and has no questions, I would like to make a motion to accept our consent agenda. Do I have such a motion?
Well, can I make a comment on one of the items on the?
Sure, you can.
On the agenda regarding the, the waste, the dorm road planning module resolution? I'm just not clear under the calculations for EDUs. There's two numbers that were, one number that they used versus another number. And I'm just wondering why there are two different numbers for calculating EDUs and if they are using the proper number, namely, an EDU is a measure of the, what's that, GPD? What's that? Per day, gallons per day. So one number was 22.1 gallons per day per EDU, and that's the number they use to calculate that they would need 12 EDUs versus 300, 250 gallons per day, which would be higher number of EDUs. So this resolution calls for 12 EDUs and not the higher number. So I was just curious as to who determines which is the proper gallons per day definition of an EDU? Anybody got an answer to that?
Yes, I would say our, we have a great team on the Sewer Authority that do their due diligence. They're the ones that make the calculations, and they have done it for many years. And I believe they've done it in the right way. Now, I don't know anything about the other numbers that you stated as far as Bucks County, but perhaps you could come to a meeting and ask that question, because I can't answer that here. I can't.
The next meeting of the Newtown Board and Sewer Authority is the 18th, is that correct?
That's correct.
At 3:00 PM?
Yes.
At 15 South Congress Street in the Borough? Is that correct?
In the Borough.
I will be there. Thank you.
So, do I have a motion? Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion from the board? Hearing none. Any discussion from the public? Okay. Let's, let's vote on this. All in favor of consent, the consent agenda in its full form, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes four to one. Okay, we have no engineer reports today. That brings us to our solicitor's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item on the solicitor's report is considering authorizing drafting of and advertising of a fire and EMS tax mileage ordinance. There was a recent change to the law that allows townships of the second class to levy in excess of three mils for fire services, actually up to 10 mils, and in excess of a half mil for EMS service, up to five mils for EMS service. However, in order to do so, the township must enact an ordinance, and that is specified in the statute. So we would ask for your permission to draft and advertise the appropriate ordinance based on whatever mileage is agreed to by the board, and have that ready for the December meeting of the board.
Do I have such a motion? I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board?
So as, as Mr. Sanders, you described it, it's like another step in the process.
Yeah, it's an administrative step. Normally, you levy taxes by resolution, but the statute specified ordinance for the increase in the fire and EMS mileage, so it's administrative.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
So to be clear, this is three mils for the fire?
No, it hasn't been determined yet.
Yes, we haven't discussed the budget yet, so.
Okay, so what does this ordinance say again? Can you?
The, the ordinance authorizes the board to levy a number of mils for fire tax as yet to be determined, but it's above the three mils that you're allowed to levy by law, and in fact, above the four mils that you currently levy due to a referendum. Same with EMS. The law says you can levy a half mil of EMS. Now you can levy up to five mils of EMS, but if you go above five, and we levy, we currently levy one based on a referendum, you've got to do the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the board with questions? Anybody from the public? Okay, hearing none. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of authorizing drafting and advertising of fire and EMS tax mileage ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Second item on our agenda this evening is consider authorizing drafting and advertising of ordinance adopting the 2021 International Fire Code with amendments. Our esteemed Fire Department informed us that the 2021 version of the, or addition of the International Building Code and with it the International Fire Code is being adopted and will be in force. When that happens, the township usually follows suit and enacts the most current, up-to-date version of the Fire Code as the township's fire code. This would be a motion to authorize us to draft and advertise the appropriate ordinance to do so.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion from the board, or any discussion from the board, I should say? Any from the public? Okay, hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing drafting and advertising of the ordinance adopting the 2021 International Fire Code and amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next item on our report is consider authorizing the solicitor to draft a letter to Newtown Borough for fire services. This follows up on a discussion that the board has had at its last two meetings regarding a fee for the Borough to pay the township. I believe at the last meeting, there was some consensus, I don't think it was unanimous, but some consensus to enter into a one-year agreement with Newtown Borough and to charge them a sum of money for fire services. This would be appropriate for board discussion, and if there is consensus, to authorize me to send a letter to the Borough advising them accordingly.
Thank you. Do I have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion from the board? I would like to have some discussion. We have worked diligently with the Borough and really to no avail. We've offered them a work session with Harrisburg, the, the chief in Harrisburg that helps boroughs and townships get, you know, together to make a logical contract. They do not agree with our, they, Harrisburg agrees with the way we do it. So there's a certain equation, and that is done. That's a Harrisburg mandate for the state of Pennsylvania. And I've asked, like I said, I'm sticking with the 275, even though that is a very low number. But I made a promise. I'm going to stick to the promise. And I also made it clear that in upcoming years, it's going to rise drastically. So that is why we're at the 275 number this year. And that's my discussion, board discussion. Does anybody else have any discussion from the board?
You mentioned 275, $275,000 for next year, right?
Yes.
And after that, undetermined. There was other numbers put out. Did we have a consensus on that, 275,000? I think that's what the solicitor is asking us to determine now, what is our consensus.
Well, we did have three supervisors to agree to that, so if anybody else doesn't agree to that, I know.
Mike, I'm in agree with it, based on the, you know, agreement we seem to have like a month and, month and a half ago, around 275. I thought, I thought maybe there was four or five of us that, that were willing to go with 275 at one point.
I think there was four of us, yes. Mr. Calabro being the one that didn't, and actually, and you know, I hate to say this, he was right, so.
You can make, you can make a change.
Well, look, when you're right, you're right, so.
Yeah, but you're, but you're being right for the Borough, not being right for the township, the people who elected us. And that's, if you're saying I was right, then it should be 350.
Well, it will be, it will be in the following years.
That's, that don't, the following years are not going to come. If I was sitting on the Borough Council, next year, I'd say, pah, we're not paying you anything. You, you're dropping the ball here. You're, you're catering to the Borough when it's the people of the township that pay for us to be up here, not the Borough. So that's, that, I'm not going to say it anymore, but if you're saying I'm right, then you're being a hypocrite by going with 275.
Well, I don't think that's true, because we had discussions. We got to that number. They were comfortable, they weren't comfortable with any number. But that is the number that I said. And like I said, I'm going to stick to that number. That number was before you mentioned your number, and I hear you. And we checked with the Harrisburg.
I think I mentioned 300,000 all the time, at least 300,000.
Oh, it's going to be way more next year.
Yeah.
Or the year after.
I'll hold you to that.
Okay, you can.
I will.
By the way, who, who pays us?
The Borough.
The taxpayers of Newtown Township.
No, no, you took, you told, you said, people up here are paid by the residents. We're not, we're not paid by the residents.
Don't their taxes pay us?
No.
No? Have you looked at the budget?
$4,132 a year.
Yeah.
That, that is payment.
Although, it works out to more than the minimum wage in Pennsylvania.
So you're saying what you get paid by the people of this township is a joke? You're taking your position as a joke?
Just to be clear.
Can we get back on track?
The money comes from the state.
Mr. Mack, read, read the, read the budget, if you know what the budget says. And it has our salaries in that budget, whatever we may make. It's in that budget, and it comes from the people of this township, not from the people of the Borough.
I want to call this back to order.
All right, Mr. Township, all right.
Call this back to order. We are discussing having the solicitor write a letter to the Borough. That is where we are, and that is what we're voting on. So we have a motion, we have a second, we have discussion from the board. Is there any discussion from the public? Hearing none?
Wait, there, there's someone.
Okay. Sorry, didn't see you.
No problem. My name is Eric Pomerance. I live at two-door Chester Lane off Twining Bridge Road. I'm confused, because I would assume that the operating principle for shared services among township and Borough or any other governmental entity would be an equal share of the burden. And from what I understand, and maybe I'm wrong, it would seem that by allowing a $275,000 payment to suffice for the Borough to get the full value of the township's fire protection services, that they are not. that they are not paying an equal share. And therefore, at the same time, you're going to propose a mileage increase, yet to be determined, but the budget appears to say three mils, to increase our taxes, so that you could, so that the Borough can get a less than, they can pay a less than fair equal share? That doesn't seem to be what the Township Board of Supervisors should be advocating as a taxpayer in the township. Look, I'm all for being a good citizen and making sure that the Borough, you know, that their houses don't burn down, but this seems like they're leveraging that good feeling that we don't want to let their houses burn down against us so that they can pay less. And until you came, until they would come to us and say, "We have done away with our entire discretionary budget, and we simply don't have the money anymore," why should we cut them the break? If I don't have the money to take my kids on vacation because I have to pay the mortgage, the mortgage gets paid. So as long as they have a budget that hasn't wiped out all their discretionary spend to fund the essential services, I think it's really overstepping to ask the township citizens to absorb a mileage increase where the Borough isn't going to be paying their fair share.
They are raising taxes by, I believe, I believe, five mil.
Will it make it a fair share?
Yes, they.
Well, how would it be if the number that Harrisburg says should be 350,000, and you yourself have just said, in current, in additional years, it will go up drastically? That leads me to believe that, no, the 275 is some kind of a discount that you've offered them because we couldn't reach an agreement. And that seems like not the right way to negotiate. If we disagree long enough, you'll give us what we want?
Well, that won't be happening anymore. There will be no, no negotiation.
This year, I don't know what's going to happen anymore, I don't know what's going to happen next year, but we got a budget this year that's going to raise my taxes, and apparently, there's a commitment to allow them to pay less than what they should pay. And I'm trying to understand that.
Yes.
How can we do that? How can you, as our representatives, raise our taxes at the same time you're giving the Borough a freer ride, a cheap, a cheaper bill? That makes very little sense to me economically, and it's, doesn't make much sense to me as you're representing our interests? I think Mr. Calabro just said it, was you're supposed to represent us.
Of course.
So why is it that you are going to raise our taxes for fire protection and give them the break? Give me the break!
No, I hear you. I absolutely agree.
And I think there are probably a number of other citizens of our community that would agree with me.
I'm sure a lot of them do.
So then why are we doing this?
Because we have always taken an approach of negotiations throughout the years.
And when someone, and when someone refuses to negotiate, you yourself said they refused to negotiate, the answer isn't give them what they want, the answer is to say, "Okay, fine, no deal."
We're not, we're letting them raise taxes in a rate that they can sustain while they, and next year they're going to have to raise it a lot.
It isn't our job to determine what they can sustain. It's our job, your job, to help determine what we can sustain and to minimize the amount that we have to pay because somebody else decides they can't sustain. Do they still have a discretionary budget? Yes, they do. Their budget is not wiped out, their discretionary spend only is essential services. Until that moment, we can't know what they can sustain. Because until they have taken all their money that they have to give from taxes that is discretionary and apportioned it to the essential services, we can't possibly know what they can sustain. So I think it's unfair to make an assumption about what they can sustain when you're not representing them. You don't have access necessarily to their information or the power to do anything about it. You have the power and the access to our information. So I'm confused. I'm confused by why this board apparently is more willing to give them the benefit of our dollars than to act on our behalf to protect our dollars. Why is that?
Well, I can try to answer that. The amount that they gave, contributed this year was 180, I think, 180 roughly. And this is a, a big jump.
Yeah.
But, and, and.
Dennis. Just a minute, let him speak, please.
And this is, three, four years ago, there was no contribution.
Were we able, are we able to go and say to the?
We use, go ahead.
Well, I'm trying to understand why.
Excuse me, this is not a question and answer time. You can ask questions in public comment. You might get an answer, you might not, but we're explaining to you what we're voting on right now. And that is not up for debate at this time by.
Well, then, what, then is a comment?
Well, it's up for discussion on the motion. I think that's what this gentleman is doing, is discussing the motion. It's, this is not public comment. This is a discussion of the motion.
Right.
Am I, am I, am I mistaken here?
No, you're not.
I mean, I'm objecting to the motion, given the fact that it appears that you're giving the Borough a better deal than it would, than they would seem to deserve, given the fact that they haven't engaged in good, engaged in good faith negotiations. And the fact that they paid less before seems to fly in the face of logic. Sure, it was cheaper then, but look at the increased costs that are hitting us now. Look at what it's, because everyone knows that transitioning from the volunteer fireman to the paid fireman is expensive. And it, and it's, it's so expensive, in fact, that you're going to raise our mileage. So I still can't understand, and I object to the concept of giving the Borough a deal when you're paying for that deal out of our pockets with an increased mileage for us.
I'd also mention that the formula we used for fair share calculation, in the beginning, the budget was arranged, arranged a little bit differently. The, so that the denominator of that percentage was lower. Now that, that denominator's higher, going forward, it was, say, Mr., if you can correct me if I'm wrong, our fire services were 1.4 five years ago, and now they're, now they're 4. something, 4.2.
I mean, all I want to know is that the people that use the service all pay equal share. That's, I mean, to me, all the, all the calculations in the world don't matter. If, if you're asking me to pay $10 for fire service, then, then each Borough member should also pay $10 for fire service. And if that's not the way it's working, and they're paying less, it's somewhat crazy to then say, "Well, we're going to raise your mileage, Newtown Township people, because these guys didn't want to pay what would otherwise be their equal share." And yes, we know how expensive it is because of the switch over to paid fire service, but that's the way the world's working now. We all have to, so we're going to have to tighten our belt. There are certain things that we're not going to be able to do in the township that we would like to do, or maybe are less important or less essential, like road paving, because we have to pay for these other things. And so I, I'm just, so I object to the concept of allowing them to have 275,000 when Harrisburg says it should be more, other people that have looked at the budget say it should be more, and the concept of giving them a sliding scale to get there, that's not our job. Our job's not to give them the sliding scale, our job is to say, "This is what it's costing us." I'm trying to, you know, make it equal for everybody, and if you can't do it, figure out how you're going to do it.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, so we did have four, yeah, sure.
Just to clarify, because there's too many numbers being thrown around.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Just to clarify, because there's too many numbers being thrown around for me. The 285?
Seventy-five.
275, thank you. Is that what the Harrisburg equation said they should pay? Yes or no?
No.
No.
What does it say they should pay?
I heard 500,000.
Well, heard, I appreciate your saying, but heard doesn't help it.
It's still above the 350.
No, they, they said it would be about 350 this year. But we didn't have that discussion with them until just recently. Because, and so now, we know that our calculations are right. But we still made an offer, we've been discussing this with them wrongly. We've been discussing with them, you know, to try to come together on, on something that they obviously weren't willing to even, you know, even think about. So now, we're putting our foot down for next year. We have a number that four supervisors have agreed to, and we're going to vote on that to send a letter to them to pay up.
Well, there may not be four supervisors anymore. After hearing some of these criticisms, I think 350,000 should be a better number that we should put in there, if we're going to put a number in. And I'd like to propose that we change whatever our consensus was to 350,000.
Can I follow with my comments? I don't know. What I was going to say, even, just because you had that conversation, if it's not in writing, it was before this formula was figured out. Then you go back and you say, "Look, we had misinformation. This is what it is." Okay, if you're saying that's supposed to be 350, and you figured out the 275.
Not me, don't point to me.
No, 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 you knew the report, or somebody told me, I'm sorry.
I said 350 all along.
Okay.
Can I just say?
But all I wanted to say was, negotiation is, both of you sitting down, you don't have to be arbitrary and say, "It has to be," but negotiate from that, the 350 starting point or whatever it is. It's not fair to give them that substantial break, even if it was 300, it's not as substantial. And hit us with the thing, everything's going up, I know. That's all. I just wanted to put my two cents in. Thank you.
Thank you. They have already addressed this in their budget by raising taxes for five mil, which is a big hit on, and I know, nobody cares. I know, I hear you.
Maybe you are, maybe you should move to the Borough. Maybe you should go live in the Borough and go represent them on the council. Resign from the Board of Supervisors because you seem to want to be in the Borough.
I think that's a ridiculous thing to say.
No, it's not a ridiculous thing to say, because all you've been doing this whole time is siding with the, you and Dennis siding with the Borough. Now, you said we've been proven right at 350. We have proof. We can go back to them and say, "Now we have proof, 350 is the number." And I, I hate to say this, but going back even further, they're the ones that say they didn't even want our services. They said after January 1st, they didn't want us, until we went back and said, "Oh, no, 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 please. Put our, put our foot down." We didn't put our foot down. We went and catered to what they want. And, and now, we have proof that we were right at 350, and we should be changing the, changing it to the 350, of which Harrisburg proved us to be correct on. But now, let's give them the 275. Oh, they came up from what, 190? They weren't paying their proper pricing back then. We pay $4 million in the budget. Now, if they want 50% of our services, then actually give us $2 million. But I got to worry about either that, or they could build their own firehouse and get their own fire department, which is going to cost them about $5 to $10 million to do. I think they're doing their people an injustice by not giving us 350,000.
Well, it seems to make sense, considering that they also said they're not going to pay the workers' compensation any longer for the Newtown Fire Association. And I notice in an agreement that's coming up for consideration. That the township will take over that payment if necessary. So we're already agreeing to pay more into these funds and not getting enough from the Borough. So more of this more recent information that came to me, it makes me want to change my mind. I would go with 350.
And didn't they refuse to talk to Harrisburg?
We just sent them the invitation, and they have not agreed to the work.
Well, apparently, because they know.
To the work session yet, but that just happened within the last few days.
Because they're not stupid, they knew 275 is a better deal. I mean, come on. But, but we're not forcing their hand. We're not, we're not doing anything to say, "We're right, 350 was, was proven right by Harrisburg." We could send them a, a letter just like they sent us. You don't want to pay 350? Then as of January 1st, there's no fire services. They said it to us first. They said it to us. They didn't want our, they didn't want our services.
They opted out in May. They sent us a letter in May that they were opting out.
So if you all want to make up a number, you may do so. I will vote against it. You can make up your own number, and, you know, without listening, perhaps, we have the chief right here. Perhaps you would want to ask him some questions about.
There are two numbers, 275 and 350.
No, that is not the exact number, 350. It's a different calculation.
Well, I'm going with Mr. Calabro suggesting.
But he hasn't been in any of those meetings, so that's what he suggested.
I wish, maybe we need two new negotiators to go negotiate with the, with the Borough, because there's nothing being done.
We're not going to do any more negotiations. We're just going to bill them the right amount from now on. And we started on this path this year, and I believe we should finish it in good faith. If you don't believe that, then you can overrule me.
No, I don't think we're doing anything in good faith, because again, the good faith is, the good faith is to the people of our township, not to your people of your Borough.
Okay, should we agree to table this at the moment, come up with a different number? Because I don't think we're going to have an agreement. Unless you want, all want to have an agreement on some other number.
Who's for 350? I'm for 350.
I'll go with 350.
I'll go with 350. There's three right there.
There you go.
Make the motion, John.
I'll make a motion that we send the letter out and specify 350 for the year of 2026, and leave it at that.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion from the board? Any from the public, any more from the public? Hearing, can we just vote on this? I know, I know, but you've already spoken. You've spoken.
I haven't attended many of your meetings, but it's an education, and as a teacher, I'm always all about education. And what I'm seeing tonight, my own personal opinion, is disagreement, which is healthy. But also, on behalf of some of the members of the board, a my-way-or-the-highway attitude regarding specific issues going on in the township. I'll refer to my own issue in Newtown Gate and what I've just experienced listening right now. And I commend the three members of the board who have decided to work on behalf of the township residents and not the Borough residents to have the Borough pay their fair share. And I agree with Phil. If they don't like it, let them build their own firehouse. Let's start working for the township residents. We pay your salaries, we pay the salaries of our police, and, and I, I know it's, it's a drop in the bucket. But the point is, you work for us, not for the Borough, not for some unknown entity who decided he wants cars ticketed on Fountain Farm Lane. You work for us, and I have seen disagreement tonight showing, in my opinion, that that's not always the case. And I don't like it. I'm a 55-year resident. I know how, don't know how long you've been in the township, but I have addressed this board many times in years past. Issues going back to the infamous northern bypass on the bypass issue. That was going to go right over my property at the time. I promise you, this issue with Fountain Farm isn't over, and I will fill this auditorium with residents in upcoming meetings until we get a resolution that is satisfactory.
Thank you, but we are discussing.
The law is the law. Fine. The law is the law. Fine. You can discuss what you want. I'm just saying.
This is not what we're talking about right now. To understand, this is not on the agenda.
General to the public, how you're conducting yourself. And Ms. Snyder, you're the chairman of the board. You've been overruled.
Well, I had four votes before this.
Well, you lost them.
Apparently so.
I dare say it's because of the back and forth that I'm listening to that it wasn't clear to Phil, it wasn't clear to John and Kyle about this number. And it should be when it affects our taxes and what we're going to be charged. So I agree with these gentlemen and I disagree with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. No? Right. Motion passes three to two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Final item on our report this evening is consider authorizing execution of an agreement with the Newtown Fire Association. The current agreement with the Newtown Fire Association for township fire coverage between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM is expiring at the end of the year. This new five-year agreement with the NFA has nothing to do with the borough. I am happy to say, and it's completely separate. It would be appropriate to authorize the execution of that agreement with the Newtown Fire Association.
Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
I have a few things. I hear a few things. You said five years? I thought it was six years. Is it five years? And I guess ChatGPT was wrong.
Scope of Services. You're, John, I didn't hear those words come out of your mouth, did I? ChatGPT was wrong.
Actually, it was Google. Notebook LM.
Ah. Well, that's why. I'm looking at the agreement, but I don't, I'm looking for the term. This agreement shall be effective January 1st, 26 and be effective until December 31st, 2031.
Six years?
Yes.
That's five years?
That is, that is a six-year term. If that's not correct, we need to correct that.
There you go. AI again. To the rescue.
Document somewhere else. I think it said five years.
Yes, I read five years as well.
I'm just looking at paragraph 17 of the agreement. It says January 1st, 2026 till December 31st, 2031.
Mr. Sanders, let's amend that, please.
It'll be December 31st, 2030 and thus be a five-year.
Yes.
Okay, that's number one.
Thank you.
Number two, regarding the operational benchmarks, there's, you know, I compared the 2020 agreement to this one. The 2020 agreement called for, you know, how fast apparatus apparatus should be on the scene, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. How many firefighters should be on a truck, et cetera. That section has been completely removed. So basically, why was it removed? It, it smells of lack of accountability.
Mr. Mack, can I point you to section, hold on a second, 2B of that, of the draft agreement? It refers that the, it says that the NFA shall act in accordance with the higher standards of professional conduct in operation of fire companies and shall strive to conduct itself at all times substantially in accordance with the National Fire Protection Codes and Standards. That document.
I don't know what that is.
I'm telling you what that is. That document outlines the minimum.
What does that document say with regard to apparatus on the scene within, for emergencies?
I don't know exactly what the document says, but I'm sure the chief foresight can speak to that.
Let's ask the chief right here.
Let me finish speaking. It should be specified in this if you're going to have some accountability.
I don't disagree with what you're saying. But I don't think it's proper for the township to have a document that has 20 and 18 minutes response time in it when that's a clear violation of the NFPA standards. You guys received the letter in 2019 that the volunteers cannot guarantee your response. We've taken no action to do anything about that. We are not near the NFPA standards. The NFPA standards is a certain amount of firefighters on the scene with three pieces of apparatus within 12 minutes. We don't meet that. And to put that in writing to a document that we are going to sign, I feel as though it leaves us open to a certain liability, which I don't think we should do when you folks know that we can't do it. That's why it was taken out. The Fire Association has sent this letter in 2019. We have done nothing to continue and provide more service after 6:00 PM. Therefore, it was my suggestion that it come out because it's a liability to the township and a liability to the Fire Association. We have done nothing. We had a study in 2018 and we've done nothing. 2018, we were told to build a new firehouse. We were told to extend our coverage. We've done nothing. That's why this fire service agreement has to be fixed. We have done nothing.
Well, thanks for explaining why you figured this should be taken out. It's a liability issue. I can recognize that. I just wanted to know why it was taken out. Thank you.
It takes a phone call, John. We're more than happy to answer it.
As I often say, the township pays us to ask these questions so that they can hear the answers rather than me making a phone call. Don't you agree?
I, I come here every month. I plead with this board to extend the coverage of fire coverage. We are at the same place now that we were 13 years ago when I took this position, except for we're covering the weekends. That is not enough for the people that live here. You just heard this gentleman say, we have an obligation to provide a service to the people of this town and we're not doing it. And you guys know that there's a problem. You all know it and we've done nothing to take the proper steps to fix it. Nothing. That's what's absurd to me. Any other questions? Be more than happy to answer any question you have.
Okay, there was a, the question about workers' compensation. I think we've heard from the borough that they intend to no longer pay for the workers' compensation of the Newtown Fire Association members. Is that correct?
Mr. Sanders, would you please strike 12C from the agreement, from the agreement?
Certainly.
That'll take care of that.
The borough has an agreement with the Fire Association till the end of 2027 to pay the workers' comp.
Till the end of 2027?
That's correct.
And you're going to strike, what is that?
So the section that I'm asking, it says that in the event that statutorily required workers' compensation coverage for NFA members if laps are not provided, the township should seek out coverage to ensure the continuity of the fire department.
So you're going to strike that?
Strike that, yes, please.
Okay. Very good. The other last thing I had was some financial information. It says that the, this agreement does not specify an initial amount that the township will contribute to the NFA whereas the 2020 agreement specified 160,000. I think we're paying more than that now. It rose from that. It's around 175 or something like that.
It's 250 this year and next year's projected to be 285.
So this number is not in the current budget?
It's not. It's determined annually by the Board of Supervisors as part of the budgeting process.
Part of the budgeting process?
Yes.
So that will come up later?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I think those are all the questions and issues that I had.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to consider authorizing execution of agreement with Newtown Fire Association?
Subject to the revisions that were stated during this evening.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Show them.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion from the board? Any other discussion, discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing the execution of the agreement subject to the changes made tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Oh, any opposition? Any opposed? No. Motion passes five to zero.
That concludes our report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. General fund balance this evening is $5,876,041. Plan expiration is before the board with no action required. This evening, we have Chief Earn to give his monthly chief's report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, board members. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Very good. October police report for 2025. We documented 2,344 calls for service. We logged nearly 20,000 miles on our patrol fleet. For the month of October, we had 12 arrests and clearances, including an attempted homicide, two frauds, two retail thefts, one resisting arrest, three narcotics violations, and three DUIs. There were 11 new cases referred to detectives for investigation with five crime scenes processed, which included the attempted homicide, a sexual assault, a suicide of a 21-year-old, a retail theft, in addition to frauds, extortion, and criminal trespass investigations. There were 91 traffic crashes for the month. We issued 221 citations and 202 warnings. We had two truck enforcement details, one with the task force and one with our own department, resulting in 12 truck inspections, resulting in five citations, 23 warnings. Five vehicles were placed out of service and three vehicles were towed. Our directed traffic enforcement details, we had 63 at six different locations, issuing 122 warnings and 87 citations, including a grant-funded enforcement initiative between 10/6 and 10/18 with 16 details involving 138 warnings and 26 citations. That was on overtime and it was grant reimbursed. Notable significant events for the month. On 10/17, we swore in Police Officer Christian Snowden and Police Officer Garrett Cherick to Newtown Township Police Department in Judge Mitch Petrucci's office. Police Officer Snowden recently graduated from Temple University Police Academy and Police Officer Cherick was formerly a Bethlehem Township Police Officer who transferred to Newtown Township. The officers will be introduced to the board probably in the December meeting if time permits. On 10/27, also a notable job, we actually had a shooting on the bypass at Newtown, at Newtown and Middletown Township responded to. It's Newtown Bypass and Woodburn Road. Both vehicles were traveling eastbound. There was some type of road rage incident and shots were fired upon the female operator, the sole occupant of the vehicle. The incident ended up in Middletown Township where the offender actually exited his vehicle and attempted once again to shoot at the female operator, placing several bullet holes in her front windshield. Based on that information, flash information was broadcasted out of the suspect and the description of the vehicle. That vehicle was located at Route 532, Washington Cross and Brood in Stoopville and it was apprehended by Newtown Township Police as well as Newtown Borough, Lower Makefield, and Pennsylvania State Police. A weapon was recovered and the subject from Warrenton was officially charged with murder, attempted murder, and aggravated assault and related offenses. On 10/30, we, October 30th, we had a suicide within Newtown Township, unfortunately. And we took a missing report of a 21-year-old subject from, lives locally by his parents at our headquarters. And as a result of our search in the area, we located the male behind the Ace Hardware down at the shopping center. Family notifications were made. Public service announcements, a couple of things. Theft from vehicles, please lock your car doors, remove your key fobs. Do not leave valuables inside your auto. Report any suspicious activities. There is a high deer crash season. Please put your cell phones down, slow down. Use high beams when no cars are incoming. October 25th, we had our drug takeback event and between that and our box, we collected nearly 300 pounds of unwanted narcotics and disposed them properly. Finally, frauds. Credit card companies will not send a carrier to your home to pick up credit cards. Do not buy gift cards. Do not click on links from unsolicited emails or text messaging. If you don't know it, don't answer it. If somebody calls your phone and somebody's crying in the background saying they're locked up, they need money, whatever, hang up and call the person directly yourself. Do not fall victim to a fraud. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Chief, I would just like to say that the excellence that you and your officers always display is something that we are very proud of, at least I can speak for myself. I thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you, ma'am.
I had a question based on the directed traffic enforcement. I think you mentioned a little bit about the grant-funded safety, safety enforcement. Could you tell us a little bit about those two? You have occupant safety enforcement and pedestrian safety enforcement.
There are specific guidelines from the grant that authorizes us to hire officers on overtime if we apply for the money. So when that becomes available, I apply for the money. They usually give us $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 in that range to do a specific enforcement. It's got to be so many hours a day and officers dedicated specifically for that. And we do it for either high pedestrian crosswalks and/or aggressive driving DUI-type related events.
Okay. Chief, I had a question that I think I've asked you before about the message board that indicates your speed limit and so on. It's electronic. You paid $17,000 for it, I believe. And I believe I helped you get that on the budget last year.
Yes, you did, John. Thank you very much.
But I, I think you told me that it was in for repairs. That's why we haven't seen any data in your report last month about it. But since then, I've seen it in use in Wrongstown, I mean Wrightstown, and wondering if it's been repaired and will it be employed in Newtown? And will that data be in future reports?
The one you've seen in Wrightstown is actually Wrightstown's. They purchased one after, after we purchased one at my request.
They spent $17,000 themselves?
Yes, they did for the same methods and traffic enforcement initiatives that we had. So the one you've seen up on Dorm Road in Wrightstown and/or Stoopville, Wrightstown Road, I believe it was on for an extended period of time.
I thought it said Newtown on it, but maybe not.
Well, it says Newtown Township Police on it because we control where it goes based on our traffic patterns because we're contracted.
So ours is still in for repair after all these months?
No, ours, ours came out of service beginning of probably first or second week of October. And as a result of the high deer collisions, it's parked outside a Clark Nature Center where it's been for the last two to three weeks. Not so much doing traffic enforcement, but a message board for occupants' safety.
There's a lot of deer killed on Dorm Road over there?
There's a lot of deer killed all over the township. So it's just, it's a high-traffic area. So we felt it was.
I wish they get rid of some of the deer in our backyard.
You're welcome.
Chief, just a, a quick question in regards to total miles patrolled. You're hitting 20,000. You're, you're above last year's. And I'm assuming your patrol cars take a beating doing this. Just curious is what, what is in your rotation for new patrol cars?
What is mine, I'm sorry, sir.
What is in your rotation for new patrol cars?
Rotation is for, when I first came over here, sir, there was no rotation schedule for any vehicles, computers, anything in the department. So we put a rotation schedule in place for the vehicle fleet, computers, any type of technology, things that we have an end-to-shelf life, AEDs that are in the buildings and the police cars. Police car rotation is based on four to five years rotation and I need probably four a year to rotate that on a steady basis between unmarked, marked, and specially vehicles. That's why I requested and put it in, in the budget every year for four cars. The price of cars keep on going up. I have no control over that. The upfitting of cars continue to increase. I have no control over that as well.
And hypothetically, if the board cut one car out of this rotation, what would that do to you next year?
No, I would ask for five.
Okay.
You know, if, if you want, if, if the board pleases, I'll play an audio tape for a job we responded to. A couple of your board members received it during our 101s a couple of years ago. This is the critical nature of our cars. And if we And if we don't get these cars, this is... I'm going to mute his names. You hear that? I want to pass on some huge compliments to the police officers that rushed the boys to the hospital. I was coming back from Mass at St. Andrews on Route 532, right at the intersection of Highland Road, and I saw the two police cars barreling down Highland Road as fast as they could, made a safe turn, and rushed on towards the hospital. And I thought, wow, this is a life-or-death situation. And then when I got to Temple Ridge and saw the police cars and two ambulances coming out, I realized whoever those policemen were, they realized that they couldn't wait for ambulances in like a battlefield condition. They took me to charge, apparently put the boys in the police cars and rushed them to the hospital. I've never seen police cars drive that fast and with such urgency. And I applaud those guys. As I was leaving the house to go to work, not knowing the whole story, when I got out onto the road, there was a, it took a police car, or two police officers, one on the left, one on the right, were stopping a woman in a white SUV. I didn't know why, but they were stopping her coming in. And the officers had their hands on the, on the, with their guns. And the officer wouldn't move out of the way, keeping me blocked. And I thought, well, okay, he's got his job to do, but I've got to go to work. And what I realize now is that he was protecting me, keeping me back behind, just in case this was the woman that they were after. Just huge compliments to the police department. And those two officers reacted with combat-type precision and taking action. I pray for them, I know they're traumatized. Thank you. Just wanted to pass on a compliment, bye.
To Aaron?
Now, I'm not a, I'm a cop. My job here is to make sure the township's protected liability-wise. My job is to make sure my cops have the equipment they need to do their job. That's why I ask for training, that's why I ask for equipment. I don't ask for tools I don't need. I ask for things that I desperately need to make sure this township's protected, so we can protect our residents. That's what my job function is.
Understood, Chief. And I've been through budgets where some members have cut police cars, and, believe me, it takes a long time to make up for that one cut of a police car. Even though you're saying next year will be five, it never happens. So I hear you, and I agree with you, to be honest with you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask you, what is the typical mileage? Or do you go by wear and tear or both of those things together to judge when a police car can no longer be of service?
Divic gives us a report. It's whatever the odometer mileage is, is times three. We also consider wear and tear, cost factor for repair, major repairs that a car needs. I'm not going to spend $4,000, $5,000 on an old car that needs a transmission when the car's got 100,000 miles on it. It's a waste of township tax dollars. You won't spend that kind of money on your own personal car. I don't expect the township to do the same. So I try to balance out what's our best residual value when we sell them in this bid. If you check the reports, probably in this bid, we probably brought in about $20,000 in return selling our old, used police cars on that site. So whether we trade them in or sell them in this bid, something we get a better bang on our return when we get rid of them before they get to a mileage where they're worthless.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you sell these old cars?
Yes, sir, definitely.
And you can't use that money to offset the cost of some new cars?
It goes back into the general fund, sir.
It goes into the general fund?
Yes, sir.
So basically, it could be taken out of that to pay for the four cars, some of it. I don't know how much is involved. Do you have any idea what that total would be for last year, maybe?
I don't have it available. It's probably $20,000, $25,000 we got on resale value of cars that we sold them in this bid.
$25,000 total?
Total.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That's all we have under our report, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to our second round of public comment. For anything on the agenda.
Hello, everybody. Bradley Cooper, Newtown Grant resident since 1999. And I was here a few meetings ago talking about a potential applicant, Jim Worthington, wanting to build apartments and homes combo, kind of like what we have on the Borough on State Street, where homes are on top and businesses are on the bottom. And he has talked about building that on the Goodnose Farm. And I talked about my displeasurement of it, why we shouldn't have it, and why I think it's a bad application to approve, and that I feel that we give applicants almost no hard time, that they get a free rein to build whatever they want. We kind of don't do anything to try to stop them. It's like, we welcome this. We want to have overdevelopment. We want to destroy farmlands and open spaces to any type of business that wants to come in here. And I feel that it's wrong, it's not right, because people get affected by it in many different ways. People have to live next to it and deal with maybe traffic or headaches of what is being proposed, that they have no control of stopping, or only can use their voice to say that this is not right. Or people have to deal with animals going into their homes. There's been some people where I live have complained that potentially they've been getting rats or mice in their house because of the Toll Brothers development that's right across the street from Newtown Grant. I'm not saying that it's from that, but they said they've seen an increase. We've gotten squirrels in our backyard, probably because of that development, because we've never had them before till this started to get built in our, almost backyard, let's say, front yard, to be honest with you. But some of these things are arising, and it's affecting the residents. It's not helping the residents. It's not making the residents, you know, better by having this. And a lot of these applicants don't care about Newtown. They don't care about the people that lived here for 50 years, 40 years, 30 years, or so on. All they care about is, let me just shove my business in there, let me put whatever I want in there, and if it's, and we're going to do whatever we can to potentially sue the township. We're going to go in there and we're going to, you know, steamroll whatever we can. We're going to get any type of lawyers or zoning experts or any type of person and just tell you, well, if you don't listen to us, we'll circumvent what you want to do. And one of the issues that continuously arises is our zoning laws are so outdated. I was one of the only people at the last zoning board hearing about an application up on Upper Silver Lake Road for a, an application to get storage units put in there. Of course, it passed with little to no effort to stop it. And one of the things they talked about is your zoning ordinance are like 30 years, 40 years old. They don't apply to today's standards. And that's something that I've been talking about that's a big issue, because if we do want to stop something, our zoning ordinance are so outdated that these people seem to find a way, saying, well, you can't go by that, because it don't matter, because they're so outdated. And again, I was told when I made my last speech about Jim Worthington's application that there's going to be some more emphasis on not allowing these businesses or these applicants just to get whatever they want, really-nilly, that there's going to be more stoppages. And I don't see that happening. I just see that a potentially that we're allowing these to come in here, because we want to use it for tax revenue, so we can spend money on other things that maybe don't help the community or what you guys think is beneficial for the community, which, again, I don't think it is, but that's just my opinion. And it's like, okay, we're going to do all this stuff to ruin the community, not make it look nice or create more havoc in this reason or that reason, for tax money, because we don't want to have a budget that is going to make our first responders happy with the money that they need, not make the taxpayers have to pay X amount of dollars more, and make the, you know, the millage in an appropriate manner without having to worry about if a business is going to be here or development's going to be here. I think we need to start working on actually having a discussion, maybe having some type of financial planner if we have to hire him for a few bucks, and figure out how to make a budget that doesn't involve having to have every inch of Newtown destroyed with a business or a development in there to make up for the money that we're spending on God knows what.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our other business, which is discussion about our 2026 budget. And let's have an orderly discussion. I would like to start just saying a few things. I am not in favor, and I know a lot of our supervisors probably are in favor of taking money from the general fund, as is done year after year to make up some of these taxes. And while I understand why they want to do that, it doesn't let the township proceed in the growth that we need when we keep taking from the general fund. So I'm in favor of not taking from the general fund. I know that's not going to be what a number of supervisors are going to want, but just thought I would offer... That's the way I feel about it. Mr. Fisher?
I'm just looking for my notes here. But I did the math. I think at least one of the supervisor has mentioned this too. I did the math that if we took our fund balance percentage from 12.2 something down to 10, which is the minimum we want to keep in our fund balance at the end of the year, that would be 370, 372,000, 3,000, 4,000. And that would be, that would be the amount of a mil, and we could decrease the general fund or decrease the budget overall from four mils to three. I think I'm, at this point, feeling that we ought to keep... We ought to address the deficit spending that we do from year to year. We start with a large fund balance each year. We spend more than we take in. And my feeling is, at some point, it's going to get us. We're going to end with a fund balance that's not comfortable. I think the, the budget is tight. It gives us some of the things we want and need. An IT director, a half-time HR director, four police cars, and other capital items that the departments have needed and wanted, and have been cut back. At, at four mils... I'm just looking to see what, if I've captured everything. I know there was a question about a water line in Veterans Park, and it's included there. There's backstops at Helen Randall Park. There's a road program that's close to $1 million. And this is, and the budget is projected is going to fire an EMS. I've got to say that when I was knocking doors for the campaign, that nobody seemed to complain about taxes for fire and EMS. Lastly, just let me say that if we increase the budget four mils, it still puts us at the, about the one-third level of all the municipalities in the county. It makes us about one-third of the way up, meaning almost two-thirds of the other municipalities have higher millage rates than we do. And I think that's all I have to say for now. So I, I will listen to the conversation of my, of my compatriots here, and, but I'm starting out thinking 4.0. Leave the budget as it is.
I just want to say, we can't vote on this tonight, so this is just a discussion. This has to be advertised for a certain amount of time. So we're talking, and that's what we should do. Mr. Mack?
Thank you. Yeah, I've been discussing this with a number of residents in my Meet Mack Monday, and there were several questions that were brought up by somebody with a knowledge of finances more than what I have. But a couple of questions that, you know, we may be able to answer. I think it, in terms of the income, you've estimated some kind of a decrease in real estate and EI taxes. How did you calculate that? When I noticed from the recent audit, not the audit report, the treasurer's report, at least in June, the first six months of 2025, we were a little bit ahead in terms of collecting back real estate taxes, that sort of thing. Why are you estimating we are having less income from those sources?
So the year-end projection on earned income tax for resident is $5.7 million. The year-end actual from 2024 was 5.6. We're projecting 5.2 to budget on the conservative side.
So you don't have any evidence, just you being conservative?
No, we've looked at, we've looked at historic trends. And so that's the number that we're using. If the board wants to increase that number, if you tell me to increase it, I'll move it.
Well, I don't know. But I'm just saying it's used as a justification for, you know, the need for more taxes. By the way, taxes are increasing 30% about, and roadwork is decreasing 25%.
Cost for the, all these things increased. I can't control that. The amount of...
Well, I'm just saying that...
The amount of money that's budgeted for roads is exactly the same as last year.
Well, be that as it may, can you bring up that slide that I donated here to show people?
Yeah.
I mean, that number 1.9 for next year includes the, not the, what's it called?
Alternate bids?
Alternate bids of 0.35. So it could be as low as 1.5 miles, the lowest in seven years. So the trend is downward here, whereas the taxes are upward. And I'd like to try to figure out how to get more roads paved next year than 1.5 or 1.9. I mean, where are we going with this? The township has a lot of problems with its roads. And I think if you're going to serve the public, having better roads is one of the best ways of serving the public. And that's what we're here for. We're here to serve the public. So, which I've heard a lot tonight from different people, what our job is supposed to be. And now I see from this data, it doesn't look like we're actually fulfilling that job. Just saying. I prepared this chart myself. I donated it to Mr. Lewis, who corrected the numbers I had. So these are correct numbers. It's not something ChatGPT made up. But I would like to try to find more money for roadwork. Now, I know some people have talked to me about the number of police cars. In the past, we haven't done, we haven't approved all of the cars that were required or asked for. But we still haven't come to a year where five cars have been asked for. So I don't know if there's any leeway there. I believe what the chief is doing is in the best interest. I believe what the chief is doing is in the best interest of the police department. But we're also hiring new people, like an IT director for, I don't know how much that would cost, full-time, 150,000 or so, how much?
That what we have for salary is 110.
110, but what about his other benefits?
It's probably another 35,000 on top.
Another 35,000 on top?
Yep.
So I was close, 145,000. Let's round it up to 150,000. Now, how much does it cost to pave one mile of road? I don't know, I'm getting various estimates. It could be $400,000 per mile. It depends on the road, I imagine. So we need to find at least one more mile of road work. We need to find another $400,000. And one of the other items that was on the budget that I don't know, the Public Works Director is not here. I thought he was going to be here to answer the question why we need a new dump truck at $200,000, $205,000. So between the dump truck and an IT director, you got over $300,000, nearly $400,000.
The dump truck that is being replaced is a 2012.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
So the dump truck that is being replaced is a 2012.
Okay, how many dump trucks do we have?
I don't know that off the top of my head. You can put it in an email and I can get you the answer.
Maybe he knows, maybe he doesn't know.
Maybe you can put it in an email and I can get you an actual answer.
I did put it in an email.
At 4:30 today?
Well, it takes AI the amount of time to figure out these things, you know? So I'm sorry, I couldn't be more proactive. But I'm asking the question now, I think we need the answer. I don't know anything about the Public Works Department. The guy is never here to answer questions.
Send an email.
Email, 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 keep it secret. That's what this is all about.
Keep it secret here.
Because people need to come up to the podium and answer the questions that we may have, so that the whole township can hear what the answers are. Why do everything through email, through phones? I mean, that's, you know, not the way open government should be working.
And it's in the budget.
Excuse me?
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget. What's in the budget?
The cost of the fire truck, the dump truck.
The number of dump trucks that the Public Works Department.
The number isn't there, but.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking for information like that. What do the dump trucks do? I don't know. But my point is taxes are up 30%, road work is down 25%. It just does not ring very good service for the public. And I'm trying to figure out a way that we can change that. Now, I have a question about if we wanted to change the budget tonight, numbers. Like, for example, let's just say I made a motion to eliminate the 2,005,000 for the dump truck and 150,000 for the, 145,000, sorry, for the IT director, which I don't know what that IT director is going to be doing. How could we, if we made, wanted to make that change, what's necessary under the law for notifying the public if we do make that and so on? Can I ask the solicitor about that?
I will read from the Bible. Upon any revision of the proposed budget, if the estimated revenues or expenses in the final budget are increased more than 10% in the aggregate or more than 25% in any major category over the proposed budget, it may not legally be adopted with those increases unless it is again advertised once at least 10 days before adoption and an opportunity given to taxpayers to examine the amended proposed budget.
Okay, so I am not proposing any increases in, I'm proposing moving money around, basically. So we don't have to advertise.
Decrease, is that what you're proposing? A decrease in?
I'm proposing a decrease for certain items to take them out of the budget.
Okay.
Less spending and putting that money into roadwork, which would balance it out so there'll be no increase, no decrease.
Well, a decrease is, I believe, and Mr. Sander or Mr. Lewis can correct, there's no limit to a decrease.
Right.
Correct.
So, you know, I would kind of like to make that motion about.
We're not voting on anything tonight.
Okay, well, we can change the budget, can't we?
You can make suggestions, sure.
I'm making a motion that we do that, yes.
You're making a motion that we have, make a suggestion?
Sorry?
You're making a motion that we make a suggestion?
I can't make a motion that we.
No, we're just discussing.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, we're just discussing.
Kind of thing, I think.
That's a consensus. All right, I'll ask the consensus of other members what they think about the 30% increase in taxes versus a 25% decrease in roadwork. And it could be even more if the alternate bids, if we don't get enough, if the bidding comes in too high. So is there anybody who?
Can I just?
Can we hear from the rest of?
Yeah, I've just asked that. Thank you.
No, they haven't had a chance to speak yet.
I asked for the opinion, I asked for it.
Mr. Mack, how many miles of road would you like to see done reasonably?
2.5.
2.5. I used to sit on this board at one time when they used to do a half a mile.
Really?
Yes. So 1.9, although it's not 2.5, is still good for this township. I used to sit, and you could ask Michelle Fountain, she used to sit next to me as the engineer, and she would make proposals of one mile of roadway being done. My question is, was it a continual mile? And she said, no, it may be a third of a mile here, a third of a mile there. We're getting 1.9 done, continual miles, and who knows, we may be able to do more than that.
Continue, what are you talking about? No way.
Is it an eighth of a mile here, a tenth of a mile there?
Something like that.
No, I don't think so, John.
Yeah, well, look at the map.
Well.
The only continuous is Sycamore Street, which is not road repaired.
Michelle Fountain, and she'll tell you how it was in the past.
I don't care about the past. I care about the future. I'm going to be living here in the future, not the past.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in on.
I'll get ChatGPT.
I'm not in on the consensus that Mr. Mack has just said, because I haven't had time to really dissect the numbers and look at it. So I'm not ready to make a choice here.
We've heard from Mr. Lewis that we, just to keep where we're at with the roads, we have 71 miles of roads. They have a 20-year lifespan, which means about 3.5 miles have to be paved each year just to keep the current condition, not to really improve the condition of the roads overall. So we're going backwards. I don't care what it was five years, 10 years ago. I care what it's going to be next year. This is what we're talking about.
Thank you. Mr. Calabro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I kind of look at the general fund in a different way. I kind of look at the general fund as the people's money, and for us to use it is the best way possible. And as Mr. Fisher had said, we're at 12.22 right now, where we could go to 10% of the budget. And I just look at balances forward that has been from 2024 until now. And the balance forward is always 5.9, 5.2, 6.2. So we do recoup some of that money during the course of the year. Now, the other thing that I take in notice too is the actuals. And, I mean, 2019 was 2.3. 2020, 2.6. 2021, 4.5. 22, 5.6. Now, this year it's budgeted 2.059, which again is 12.22. As Mr. Fisher said, if we were to go to what says the minimum reserve of 10%, which I think, there's meaning in that, calling it a reserve, because if we need it, we should be using it. Now, if we were to do that, we would come up with, I come slightly different number than Dennis, I come, but pretty close, which is more than a mill that we could put as a relief on the citizens of this township. So by just deducting from 12.22 to 10%, we are recouping 273, almost 274,000, which I'd rather go see, go into the millage as opposed to maybe charging the residents of this township. And the difference between the 12 to the 10, again, the 373,000 is not. It still puts us at a reserve of 1,685,659.60. And as we heard tonight, Mr. Lewis said, I believe our general fund balance as of today is 5.8 million. So playing with that little bit of money does save the citizens of this township one mill off of their taxes, which maybe one mill doesn't sound like a lot, but I still think is a benefit that we could show that we want to give to the residents. And when you talk about that general fund, that general fund is money that was accumulated because of the residents of this township. So it's like using your bank account to pay off a certain amount of bills, but still keeping the comfort level in that bank account. So that's my, that would be my proposal, is to take, to drop the general from 12.22 to 10%.
Mr. Calabro, can I?
Mr. Davis.
Can I clarify that?
Yeah.
So you're proposing to take $373,000 from the general fund and put it into a transfer to the Fire Protection Fund and reducing the mill rate from three mills to that fund to two?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
I do like the idea of not raising taxes. But given it's EMS and fire, it's going to be a tough, tough one. It only cover one year, whereas the millage otherwise would keep going to support those departments. I do also like Mr. Mack's idea with the paving. I think he's right. I think, Phil, you've brought it up before in the past also in those discussions. We're not keeping up. I think a modest increase in the road mileage would be something worth doing. But I think we need to find the money somewhere else. And it's tough to make a call on where to get that from. I don't know if we can, you know, get feedback from the manager at a future date, but things maybe he could shave off to reach a certain number. But I would be on board with trying to do that. So I think it's worth considering. I do, I'm concerned with the trend going down, like it was illustrated. And I realize it's because the costs are going up, which, you know, we all know for everything's going up, so. That's all the comments I had.
Thank you.
If I may, just make another statement. I would not be in favor of eliminating the IT person. And if it was the other one, the dump truck. I mean, I could listen to an argument about that, but I probably would want to continue to support the dump truck too.
Have we had the dump truck on any other budget that we have eliminated in the past few years? Or is this the first year the dump truck?
I believe this is the first year it's on here. I know we did make a conscious decision to push it down the line. I think it was last year.
Right. So in reality, what do you think? Or does Joe Scavoni have to answer this as far as the life of this and if it can go on for another year or if it's something that we need without a doubt right now?
He wouldn't be suggesting it if we didn't need it, first and foremost.
Okay.
And if it's the board's decision to eliminate that from the budget, we'll deal with it.
And again, I hate to do that, because we have a need for certain things, and certain things we keep pushing back, you know, for one reason or another. We need to bring the general fund up to where it needs to be. You know, we can't keep taking from Peter to pay Paul, in my opinion. That's not the way to do it. We've done it every year. And at some point, you have to actually, you know, do it the right way, which I believe is this year, raising the taxes as suggested. But everybody has their own opinion, and I guess we're going to think about it and try to talk to each other during, until the next meeting to see if we can come to a consensus amongst each other so we can have something that we come to the board with and not, you know, argue about, but we can have a, some sort of a meeting of the minds.
May I just say something in regards to the dump truck? And I understand it's a hefty amount of money. But again, it's a situation that if we don't get the dump truck, and this is just going from past experiences, we're never going to recoup that dump truck. And will it be two dump trucks next year? I just find that if it's in the budget and it doesn't affect the budget and it's not affecting whatever else is in that budget, then I would. My thought is to keep the dump truck, because next year, when we come across this again, public work is going to want two dump trucks, and maybe at that time, they're going to be $300,000 apiece. And we just can't keep pushing it back, because we're never going to, we're never going to catch up and recoup what we kick back this year. So, I mean, that's just my thought. I mean, I've seen it happen in the past with police cars, possibly dump trucks. I can't remember that far back. But yeah, if we don't, if we don't get what is requested within reason, I mean, he's not asking for two or three dump trucks. He's asking for one, of which the other one is what, 12, 12 to 15 years old? I mean, over 20. Over 20 years old, okay, which I don't see it as being unreasonable. I just think that next year, it's going to catch up with us, and we're going to have to get two dump trucks, and God only knows what the price is going to be next year.
The same could be said for street paving. We're never catching up, and it could be a lot more money next year. And the 10% is, from what I heard when I first became a supervisor, when there was an expert up here talking about, a financial expert, talking about what our budget should look like, they suggested that the standard should be more closer to 25% reserve in the budget, not 10%. We put it down to 10% because, you know, we never had an emergency where we maybe required more than that. But, you know.
You know, 25%.
Pretty close there, but I would use that money instead of, you said 275,000. That's not one mill, that's 350 is one mill, is what you said.
373,000, I said.
It's going to be 373,000?
What do you, as to what's?
If you bring it down to 10%, you're saving 373,000.
Correct, correct.
I would rather keep the taxes and put that into the roadwork. And that way, people are looking at this, well, we're paying high taxes. Yes, for emergency services, but we're also getting more roads repaired. And that's my opinion.
I have one more question. Mr. Manager, this is contingent upon liquid fuels and many other things that go into the road paving project. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. The liquid fuels are based on fuel taxes.
Has there been a change in that?
It has been decreasing.
It has been decreasing.
Madam Chair, I will need some direction regarding the, whether the board desires to move that 373,000 to the Fire Protection Fund by the end of this evening, because it will require re-advertising.
Do we need a motion for that or just a consensus?
No, just a consensus.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a consensus from the board going? I will, my view is not to take the money out of the general fund.
Can you come back to me?
Sure. Mr. Mack?
Well, as I said, my view would be if you're going to take it out, put it into roadwork.
Mr. Calabro?
Yes?
Um, no.
Okay, back to you, Mr. Fisher.
I would say no.
Okay, so the consensus is to leave the budget as it is without moving the money from the general fund. Is that, did I get that right, everybody? So except for, yes, except, yes, except for you. I got it.
Yes.
So there's your direction. Is that good enough, Mr. Manager?
Tax, yeah.
Could the public have any comment on that?
Oh, yes.
Well, Ms. Promer's coming up. Mr. Manager--
There's no more public comment.
Oh, yeah, we're done with public comment. It's already passed.
It's not a motion.
There's not a motion. Right.
Hi, sorry.
Yes or no?
There's--
No.
Say no.
Yeah, yeah. There's no more public comment. Thank you. That's on motions that we make. This is not, the budget discussion is just amongst us, but--
I just have a question. The question is, do you guys, have you guys done a risk assessment? Because in term, in coming out of businesses I've worked in, you sort of assess what risks might come up to determine how much a general fund reserve should be. If you've got a risk assessment that's told you these are the likely things that are going to require, then you know what the real number might be, or the closer number. Do you, is there a risk assessment that's been done and available for the public to look at?
Mr. Manager?
There's no risk assessment. This is a policy of the township.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other business, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:51. Thank you.